Sandra Smith here yet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we got the explorers here. Okay, good. Good evening, welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Johnson.
Present.
Mann, Smith, Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Christ.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Motion to excuse Mann and Smith.
Second.
Did they have a note?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Invitation Pastor Tim Lee from Life Church.
It's an honor. In Jeremiah 29th chapter, we find a letter written from Jeremiah to the people of Israel when they were in exile in Babylon, and he encourages them, and I think it's an encourage and a challenge to us as we take stock of our responsibility to serve our city. He says, "This is what the Lord of heavens armies, the God of Israel, says to the captives. He has exiled in Babylon from Jerusalem. Build homes; plan to stay. Plant gardens, and eat the food that they produce. Marry and have children. Then find spouses for them, so that they may have many grandchildren. Multiply. Do not dwindle away. And work for the peace and prosperity of the city where I sent you into exile. Pray to the Lord for it, for its welfare will determine your welfare." With this challenge in mind, let's bow our hearts to pray. Heavenly Father, first on behalf of everyone gathered here this evening, I would like to say thank you. We thank you for the city of Lancaster. Thank you for the ways that you have blessed us, and thank you for the challenges set before us that will make us stronger as we move forward. Thank you for sending us here to this great city, so that as our lives converge and our collective wisdom combined to serve this city together, we can overcome any obstacle. For those here who have committed to build homes and grow families in Lancaster, for those who have offered of their unique gifts to make this city a better place for generations to come, for those who have risen to answer the call to do more than simply pray for the city of Lancaster, but to work for her peace and prosperity, Lord, I pray that you would gift wisdom and courage to each of them. Give our leaders wisdom to see solutions that will benefit the entire city. Clear answers to complex problems and insights, not just into how to make Lancaster a better city, but how to make Lancaster the best city that we can be. And give our leaders courage as well, Father. Courage to lead these people into the best future. Courage to move forward when detractors would have us remain stagnant, and courage to remain when people who do not carry this city's heart would have us walk into something that would not represent who we are as a people. Lord, I pray a blessing over this meeting tonight. I ask that your grace would shine on every agenda item, and that your favor would cover every decision made for the benefit of this community. Finally, I pray that you would bless the city of Lancaster. Bless our government. Bless our schools. Bless our economy. Bless and protect our residents. May your name be glorified in all that we say and do. We bless your holy name, God, and we offer this prayer in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
So, can I have an explorer lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I mean, why waste the uniform? Thank you. What's your name? Thank you very much. I noticed you guys didn't vote. At least for him. First presentation is the Excellence in Budgeting Award in Barbara Boswell and Nicole Rizzo.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Christ, Councilwoman Johnson, and members of the Commissions. It's my pleasure to notify you that the city has been awarded the Operating Budget Excellence Award from the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. It's a lovely award that we will show up in the Finance Department. The award recognizes excellence in governmental budgeting. Our budget was evaluated using 43 different criteria, and they vary from budget highlight, organizational priorities, to displaying exceptional format, recognizing best practices. Receiving this award is only possible through a very trustworthy staff, as well as having the leadership of a council that establishes priorities and recognizes the importance of conservative budgeting. And we appreciate your leadership through our budget processes that has resulted in us being recognized with awards such as this one. It's also not the result of just one person's efforts, but a team effort led by Nicole Rizzo in the Finance Department. There are budget officers in each of the departments that work many, many hours in producing the budget document that is ultimately presented to the council in June. So, I'm very proud of the efforts of the staff, and thank you again for your leadership through our budgeting processes each year. We have received this award probably more than 20 years ongoing, so it's quite an achievement.
My wife says that you're the only person in the history of my life who kept me within a budget.
I'm proud to be of service.
Okay. Is Sandy Smith here? So, do you have the award?
I don't have an award. We just have a quick presentation. Do you have an award for me?
Um, we're gonna-
I'll take it.
Is it a trophy? You want me to go ahead and tell you a little bit about the program real quick, or you want to do the-
We're not-
Well, if you can just listen for a couple minutes. You can come join me, though. Come on. Okay? So, many of you know, and many of you have been involved, the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce last summer decided to undertake a whole new program that would really engage our business owners of tomorrow. And the program is called the Young Entrepreneurs Academy. We did face-to-face interviews with kids in middle schools throughout Lancaster, selected 24 students. The students are attending 30 weeks of classes out at Antelope Valley College. They have gone everywhere from, you know, going to field trips, guest speakers in a room. They have just completed, right, guys? You've all completed your business plans, and they're all perfected, their financials. They're doing everything that it takes to open a legal business by the time they complete the program. So, once the program is complete in May, the kids will emerge from the program as CEOs or CFOs of their own legally functioning companies. And we're really proud of these kids. They range in age from 12 years old to 14. They've got some pretty brilliant ideas, and we will be at LPAC on March 19th. We'd love for any of you to attend. The kids will be pitching their businesses to 13 investors who will be investing real money in their businesses, and it's just been a pleasure and such an exciting program. But very, very quickly, and I told them very, very quickly, I'd like to introduce three of the students to come up here just real quick. Giovanni Pope, Shruthi Kumar, and Neamani Knight. And they're just really quickly going to tell you how old they are, what school they go to, what their business is, and what they've learned from... I'm sorry, it's Katie. I'm sorry. Tomorrow, you're doing the luncheon. Katie, I didn't change my notes. See?
Wow, Sandy, that... Oh. That had to have hurt. You know that?
Hello, my name is Neamani Knight. I attend Hillview Middle School, and I am 13 years old. My business plan is to do an AV Kids Expo called Stream that focuses on middle school students. The Young Entrepreneurs Academy has taught me many things, such as leadership skills, and just the power to present to different people, and just how amazing it is to be involved in this program. Good evening. I'm Katie Critchfield. I attend Endeavour Middle School. I'm 13 years old, and my business idea is called Katie Mays Baked Delights, and I make baked goods for special occasions. I really enjoy this class because it has really helped me work on leadership skills and public speaking, and I am very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you. Hi. I prepared mini cupcakes for you. They are vanilla and chocolate. I did not make them. My mother made them with the recipe that I came up with.
And this is the fat-free recipe, correct? Thank you.
Hi, Councilman. My name is Giovanni Pope, and I currently attend Armegosa Creek Middle School, and I am 12 years old. My business idea is a news corporation for kids, since lots of kids aren't into news. Why this class has helped me is because it's given me great presentation skills that will lead me into the rest of my life, and this is the foundation for what I'm going to do when I get older.
So, we have-
Giovanni, did they hook you up to a machine or something? That was really good. I don't think there's anybody in this room who could do as well as you just did when they're 12. At least, it had to have been torturous. What did you do to him?
Learn from the best, right? So, with us, we have Stan Olvin, who's our instructor right now. We also have 18 other wonderful students, for a total of 11 student businesses that will be pitching the investor panel on the 19th. So, if you can make it, I really... It's free to the public. We invite the public to attend. Come watch this. This is at 6 o'clock at LPAC, and we really do want to thank the city of Lancaster for their partnership as well.
This is like a Shark Tank, right?
It is like a Shark Tank, yes. Yes, the investors will deliberate. They each have... All the investors are people who have invested $2,500 to the program, and so we're giving money actually back to them to invest that cash into the kids' businesses. And then after this is over, we'll open the business bank accounts, we'll do all the paperwork necessary to legalize their businesses, and there you go. You've got... You'll have 21 new business people in the city of Lancaster.
Sandy, you've had great community participation throughout this. Who are some of the sponsors that have made this happen?
Oh, my gosh, there are so many sponsors, but to name a few, ADTA, S-Power, of course, the city of Lancaster. Antelope Valley College donated $10,000 in the use of their classroom each week from some grant monies that they had. We have... Marvin, you put me on the spot, because if I forget a few, it's going to be... How come you didn't mention me? Hunter Dodge, Southern California Edison, BHE Renewables, there's Sam's Club, 13 sponsors. And then we've had 13 mentors that came into the classroom for seven weeks. We've had a CEO roundtable that Councilwoman Johnson actually participated in. We've had guest speakers throughout. We've had mock investor trials for the kids to practice. We have instructors. We have four program managers, and this is all a community effort. So, these are all people who are volunteering their time to give these kids a great experience, and it's just, it's been an incredible ride, and I'm really, really proud of you guys. You know that, right? They get sick of seeing me in the class every Thursday night. It's like, here, she comes, what's she going to say?
I feel your pain.
Kind of like their mom now. They kind of ignore me, but they love me, right?
So, which one of you guys have the best business idea? Good answer. Good answer.
And they've got a lot of their parents here, too, and it's a huge commitment for the parents to get them to the college every Thursday. These kids don't have driver's licenses. They have to stay on task, and we're sending the parents' emails a lot, too, but just a fantastic group of people who have just been a pleasure to work with.
That's right. I want to picture with all of you. I've got an election coming up.
Okay.
So do you. Want to get a picture?
Love kids.
Come on. If we're going to get the city pictures first, we're going to let the friends and family go next. We're going to go right here. Have a good thing. Okay. What do we got next? Oh, we got the Los Angeles County Sheriff Explorer Scouts, and it's the 2015 Chandler Tactical Competition Awards, and who's going to tell us about that?
Lance.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. In January, mid-January, we had the pleasure of once again attending the Chandler Police Tactical Competition. It's probably the largest tactical competition for the explorers in the western United States. We have teams that come as far as Chicago to come compete. Needless to say, it's a very trying and eventful time. It's challenging. The kids train for months, and in this case, they trained for about three months, my team of 12 back there, for the competition. And this year, getting any award at this competition is big for any post, and this year, we took a first and second place. We took second place in five-man hostage rescue takedown, which is an active shooter scenario where the kids trained and participated in entering a building that they've never been in before, actively engaging targets and making rescues. It's a very stressful event, and they also took first place in the EOD Incident Command Scenario, at which time, it's very, again, very stressful. They have to think on their feet, they have to work as a team, and thankfully, our explorer Captain Hector stepped up to the plate and did a great job leading the team this year, and they represented the city of Lancaster, Lancaster station, very proudly this year. And to mention also, they won first place in five-man HRT last year also. This is actually our second year in a row bringing home a trophy, and I couldn't be prouder of them. I'd also like to mention, we have two other people in the audience. We couldn't go to these competitions, obvious reasons, to be above reproach. We can't take, you know, male deputies can't be with female youth out of state hotels, things like that. So, yeah. I have two female advisors, Jennifer Rattington and Nicole Jordan in the audience, and they go with us every year, our camping trips, everything. They give up their time, they give up their duties at work and at home to come help these kids out, mentor the kids, and I appreciate it very much. Sure. Yes, sir. Sergio Ramirez. Wesley Genidas. Captain Hector Velasquez. Gerardo Guerrero. Nancy Mercado. Nicholas Hernandez. Sharon Mahappy. Josh Camps. Gabriel Rodriguez. Nicholas Jordan. Assistant Advisor Jennifer Rattington. And Assistant Advisor Nicole Jordan.
City Manager, any agenda items to be removed?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Consent calendar.
No speaker cards?
Anything to pull?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is currently comprised.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. New business. City Clerk, any communications?
Nothing for MB1.
Okay. Assistant City Manager Kelvin... Kelvin, tell me how to pronounce your last name again. Couldn't we get this changed? I'm a lawyer. We could change it really easily.
Yes, in fact, the last time you asked me that, I said it was Paris. It hasn't changed. Tyno Tongo.
That's right.
That's right.
Really, it costs nothing to change this.
I don't think my parents probably appreciate that one, but... Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, good evening. Last month, you heard from a team of vistas that presented to you the Health and Wellness Initiative with a program intended to improve the community's wellness in our neighborhoods. Tonight, you're going to hear another presentation from a different group of vistas about our Volunteer Program One Link. It's been a year since the last vistas were here, and we've got this new group of vistas here to tell you what they've been doing and where they're going to go with the volunteer program. So, I'm going to introduce to you Kelly Cunningham and Lauren Berryhill, our current-year vistas.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kelly Cunningham, and I am here with my colleague Lauren Berryhill to give all of you a status update on the One Link program. For some of you who may not know what One Link is, it's a program developed by last year's AmeriCorps vistas with the city of Lancaster, with a goal to connect Antelope Valley residents to local nonprofits who need volunteer help. As of this month, it has been one year since One Link's implementation, and we are very excited to have the opportunity to share with you the progress the program has made since our arrival, what we are working on presently, and the future goals we have for the rest of our term that will follow through to the next vistas once we leave. Lauren and I came to this project with the idea that our main mission would be outreach and recruitment. The better part of our first three months here, we participated in many events to get the word out on One Link to as many people in-
for both volunteers and organizations, as well as offering new and improved features as compared to what we had before, which Lauren will go over these features now. So as Kelly mentioned, the Hands-on Connect software has many new features that we believe the public will want to take advantage of, along with several improvements from the previous software. We would like to thank you for providing us with the funding to make these wonderful enhancements and are extremely excited for this next step. Since the recent upgrade, we have already received positive initial feedback from several organizations as well as volunteers. The calendar and special events page have undergone dramatic changes. The calendar now allows individuals to see when volunteer opportunities take place, along with trainings for certain jobs and events filtered based on their interest. The special events page is completely customizable and easily accessible as compared to the older website. This will prove to be useful for events such as MLK Service Day and Thunder on the Lot. Our goal is to provide organizations with a tool that helps the process of managing volunteers easier and more streamlined. The volunteer signup has become easier than ever as individuals are now able to register for an opportunity with a click of a button. With the previous software, volunteers had to wait for an organization to respond to their inquiry and then follow up with dates and times that worked for both of them. The new software allows organizations to post date and time-specific opportunities where individuals can simply sign up on the spot. Now, our volunteer opportunities page has an incredible filtering system that includes categories such as court-appointed opportunities, 18 and over age restriction opportunities, and skills-dependent opportunities. We couldn't be more excited for the new features that our update has brought about as well. Several of these include a more extensive skills page on the volunteer's profile, the ability to save searches and come back to them later, and integrated Facebook app that all organizations have the ability to use. We are extremely enthusiastic about the new capability to create teams. If a school or business would like to sign up multiple people, they enter their names, their email addresses, and whether or not they want to make the team public or private. Lastly, organizations can now view an individual's profile after they have signed up for an opportunity. This feature will give nonprofits the ability to see what volunteers would best match certain roles based on their skills and qualifications. During the time we spent putting our efforts into redeveloping the website, we began to question the direction the program was headed and started to take into consideration that the website wasn't the only thing that needed to change in order to make One Link sustainable, but not only sustainable, but to thrive here in the Antelope Valley. The Corporation for National and Community Service has a list of the top volunteer cities, and they also have done research to find out what makes a community more prone to civic engagement. With this research they conducted, they found shared characteristics within these top cities that have a high connection to volunteerism. When comparing these top volunteer cities in the U.S. to the Antelope Valley, we noticed there are some current obstacles that could be contributing to the lack of full engagement in the program. The top three we believe to be the most impactful, the most currently impactful, are the amount of residents with higher education, proximity to a university town, and commute times. Now, residents with a higher education. Research done by the Bureau of Labor Statistics state that residents who are college graduates donate 12% more of their time to community service than residents with some college and over 20% more than high school graduates. As of right now, you can see that the AV has a lower percentage of residents who possess a bachelor's degree or higher, and when compared to some of the top volunteer cities such as Seattle and Iowa City, you can see that more than half of the residents are college grads. And for university town, big universities can help a city prosper in volunteerism because it brings in thousands of students who make up a big part of the population, who have the opportunity to get involved in the surrounding communities around the school, while also offering close by alumni the opportunities to give back as well. It sets up for a volunteer culture to spread to neighboring communities. And for commute times, this was one of the biggest factors Lauren and I came across as a big obstacle, which was commute times of the Antelope Valley. And we all know, especially with the 2009 U.S. census reported, that the AV commute is one of the worst in the United States. What this says to us is that the average age of people that would be volunteering in our community are spending a lot of their off time commuting to and from work, and even in my own experience, you learn more and become more involved in the city you're working in than the city you're living in. And when comparing the AV to the top volunteer cities, the AV exceeded each in commute time. Now, we're not bringing these up to say that the Antelope Valley doesn't give back to their community because we, with working with the organizations that we have, we know that there are amazing people doing great things here. But what we are saying is that when trying to build a strong foundation for this program, it doesn't seem efficient to just start outreach to the general population under these current circumstances. One thing that is exciting, though, about the AV is that it is young and we are still in the beginning stages of a community growing into these characteristics. But with the current circumstances, Lauren and I have come to the conclusion that we do need to direct One Link into a target audience first that will always need the service offered, and then spread out from there to gain a foothold. To figure out what would be the best target audience to start with, we took a step back to think about our previous outreach attempts and to see where we received the biggest positive responses. We both agreed that it was the event called Salute to Youth, which is an event to introduce students to opportunities they can do during and after high school to lead to successful lives. This is where we got the most positive response during and after the event. We not only got great response from the students, especially the avid and academy students, but we got great feedback from the principals, teachers, guidance counselors, and academic advisors as well. They talked highly about what One Link was trying to offer once we introduced what it was about, but they also voiced to us that there are many students that want to get involved, but they just don't know where to start. Lauren and I knew that after thinking back to this event, that there is a need we could fill for these students. And after doing some further research of the local high schools, we realized that One Link would not just benefit the students that are succeeding, but the students that are at risk as well. Our first step of research was gathering the AV high school truancy and suspension rates and comparing them to the county and state. And as you can see, the AV is much higher in both suspension and truancy rates compared to LA County and California averages. Both of these, as we know, are gateway behaviors that negatively affect a student's school life as well as community as a whole, both socially and financially. We chose to focus on these issues because firstly, it is something we can track the progress of very easily when working with the schools, and secondly, because there's previous research and documents from the Department of Education and National Criminal Justice Center that have similar suggestions for community service initiatives to deter students from negative behaviors. We want to change these trends in the AV by promoting community service in the schools through One Link. And Lauren will go into further detail on the trends we would like to set. As we examine the alarming statistics around truancy and suspension rates, Kelly and I began looking to other organizations as a form of reference. The Indiana Department of Education conducted research early last year on prevention techniques for chronic absenteeism and truancy and found that implementation of strategies aimed at developing family, school, and community partnerships has proven effective in increasing daily attendance rates as well as decreasing chronic absence. The Opportunity to Learn campaign and Opportunity Action released research stating that there has been a push for positive school behavior support that replaces disciplinary practices with more positive and collaborative action to prevent and correct student misbehavior. As we took all of this into account, we researched several schools in California and some across the nation that use these preventative measures. The high schools in Long Beach Unified School District have urgently promoted civic and social engagement among their students for years. However, it is not a requirement. Fremont High School District has implemented a service learning component into each of their high schools that requires students to complete 40 hours of community service before they graduate. With system, with this in mind, we then compare our own school district, which does neither require nor have a system to highly promote community service. As you can see, both of the other school districts have lower suspension and truancy rates. Even though Long Beach's approach does not drastically decrease both of these rates, we believe promoting a civically engaged lifestyle is a step in the right direction, eventually leading to a more required approach such as Fremont's. We also take into consideration that these statistics have many other factors that influence their finality as well. However, when speaking with Fremont High School District on several occasions, they constantly reiterated the positive effects this program has had on their student success in school. Now, with several upgrades to our website, we will have the capability to track the students' progress throughout their four years and collaborate with the schools to steer them in a more positive direction. Even though we know, most of you are aware of the advantages of community service and civic engagement, we would like to remind you of the overwhelming positive effects it can have on our current high school population. When we think of volunteering, we tend to associate passion, purpose, and feeling good as some of its main benefits. While these characteristics are clearly meaningful and important, there are many other benefits related to health, career advancement, and self-improvement that we believe will greatly impact our high school students. Duke Law School published an article stating, "A number of recent studies give clear indications there are physical health benefits to volunteering." Because they all use longitudinal data and some use mortality as an outcome variable, they prevent the conclusion that volunteering is causing good health, rather than that healthy people are volunteering more. Other benefits include growing professional networks, attaining new skills and communication techniques, enhancing your career by boosting your resume, and becoming more civically engaged, as stated by Points of Light Foundation, Civic Youth, and United Way. We want to provide students a platform to challenge themselves and to pave the way for a successful future. Now, we want to illustrate just how beneficial this program could be for not only our students and schools, but our, all of the nonprofit organizations as a whole. When companies use volunteers as free labor instead of hiring employees, they have the potential to save multitudes financially. As the slide shows, the Antelope Valley high schools combined have a student population of just over 20,000 students. If each student were to donate only 10 hours of service in one year, that would be a combined total of 200,000 hours. We then multiply that number by $9, the minimum wage in California. We are provided with a whopping $1.8 million that organizations could be saving in only one year. If we were to implement this program starting next year, by the time the 2015 freshman cohort graduates in 2019, organizations could have saved a combined total of $7.2 million over a four-year time span. We believe this possible outcome is a large factor in implementing this program into the Antelope Valley high schools. Now that we have conducted research and upgraded the One Link website, we are well on our way to really making an impact in the Antelope Valley. Starting this week, we already have several meetings with schools and organizations to hit the ground running. We are presenting to Avis students at the Antelope Valley High School on Friday and are really excited, and there are even several schools that are planning to create an account in order to recruit volunteers for themselves as well. We plan on recruiting as many organizations as possible and working with not only students in the AV, but also every community member interested in volunteering. With high hopes, we are creating an incentive program that by the end of our term, or hopefully during the next vistas term, will be implemented into the schools. We would like to thank you all for the opportunity and support, and would like to extend a special thank you to our acting AmeriCorps vista, Kelvin Tana Tonga. We look forward to presenting further information to you in June of this year after we have fully developed this program. Kelly and I will now open the floor for further questions or comments.
You did say you were going to start this with AV high school?
We, yes, we are talking with the students on Friday, but we are trying to get it in all of the high schools.
But we are starting with Antelope Valley High School.
Yes.
They need it the most.
Explain those statistics to me. What does the 61% truancy mean?
This is the average of the eight public high schools in the Antelope Valley.
Average of what?
Truancy, which is three or more days of unexcused absences.
In a year?
Mm-hmm. For the year of 2013-14.
So it's not 61% every day?
No. No, no, no. For a whole year.
Explain the suspension to me.
So, suspension, there are different ways that some schools like do suspension rates, like there are some that have, how do I explain this? Or... They get expelled for doing things that go against policy. Yeah, some schools have lower...
But trust me, I know what suspension means.
Yeah, no, I meant like there's a different definition for certain schools of what...
How do you get to the 13%? What does that mean?
The 13, this is also the average for the eight high schools around here. We got it from the California Department of Education.
Of one day of suspension?
What?
One day of suspension.
This was... Over the year. Yeah, over the year. Of the 2013-14.
For the whole year.
Of the students, yes. The percent of the students that are getting suspended over the year.
For whatever length of time?
Yes, yes.
So you wouldn't count it as twice if they got two days as opposed to one day?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. You know, I would have had a lot more friends back if I had waited till now to go to high school, never mind. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought, no, I thought we had a mandatory program at one time and they dismantled it a few years ago. Do you remember, Mark?
Actually, the Valley Press's history section, that was just in it a while back, is there was a controversy of whether to make it mandatory as a graduation requirement or not, which is about 20 years ago.
That long ago?
Well, it may have come up since then, but it was 20 years ago in 1994.
So we haven't had a mandatory program for, I guess, a significant, like, the time?
I don't know if that's the case or not. I don't believe we have.
Okay.
If I may say something?
Sure.
One of the things that's really impressed me about this entire group of vistas and impressed us, particularly these two, is that it's really easy to come in, take over something that someone else did, stay there for a year, bang your head against a wall if it's not working and leave. These guys did a journey of saying, "It's not working, this is how it should do." They've improved it, and you know, whether it goes to high schools or not, it's going to benefit a ton of different organizations because they made it better. And that's a real feather in their cap. Very few people do that in a year's time. They put their time in and leave. So this group and the other vistas have done an amazing job and they've inspired us.
I absolutely agree. You are truly amazing. So what do you do now?
We go to talk to all the high schools and nonprofits and get them on board.
No, I mean, you've done a year, you've done a year in the program. What do you do after that?
That's still to be decided.
Do we get to keep you?
Fine jobs.
Sorry, what?
Fine jobs.
Fine jobs?
Yes, sir.
One of them lives, Kelly lives in what she refers to as the South Antelope Valley.
Yes, that's what I refer to here.
We have a shot at her. Why do you live there?
I didn't choose the house, okay? My dad moved up here.
You guys are incredible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, you guys?
Thank you so much. Very well done.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So is Kelvin taking credit for this in some fashion?
Kelvin gets, in addition to everything he does, Kelvin has been a mentor and gone to fix the garage door at the house and, but that's important because a lot of the parents trust their kids to us, and he's taken that role seriously and been a mentor and done an absolutely amazing job.
Thank you, Kelvin. You can keep your name. New business two. Any communications?
No communications.
Any speaker cards?
None.
Shall we waive the report?
I'm fine with it.
I'm good with it.
Oh, Rhonda wanted to do it so badly. Next time, Rhonda. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept and appropriate the funds for MB2.
Second.
Let's vote. Let's do a...
There it is.
Is unanimous? Okay. New business three. City clerk, any communications?
No communications.
None.
Shall we waive the report?
I'm fine with it.
I'm good with it.
Oh, Rhonda wanted to do it so badly. Next time, Rhonda. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept and appropriate the funds for MB2.
Second.
Let's vote. Let's do a...
There it is.
Is unanimous? Okay. New business three. City clerk, any communications?
No communications.
You guys are incredible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, you guys?
Thank you so much. Very well done.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So is Kelvin taking credit for this in some fashion?
Kelvin gets, in addition to everything he does, Kelvin has been a mentor and gone to fix the garage door at the house and, but that's important because a lot of the parents trust their kids to us, and he's taken that role seriously and been a mentor and done an absolutely amazing job.
Thank you, Kelvin. You can keep your name. New Business Two, any communications?
No communications.
Any speaker cards?
None.
Shall we wave the report?
I'm fine with it.
I'm good with it.
Oh, Rhonda wanted to do it so badly. Next time, Rhonda. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept and appropriate the funds for NB Two.
Second.
Let's vote. Let's do a...
There it is.
Is unanimous? Okay. New Business Three, City Clerk, any communications?
No communications.
Want to wave?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, is there a motion? Do I need a motion? Yes, I do.
I'll make a motion that we take a position to oppose the governor's budget proposal affecting redevelopment.
Second.
Let's vote. Unanimous. I guess passed unanimously. New Business Four, update on regional homeless services partnership. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards, but we should hear this.
Okay, let's hear this.
Good evening again.
Now, remember the twelve-year-old. I would like it a little more compelling.
Yeah. I didn't start as early as twelve years old when I did my public speaking. I was probably in my twenties, so he's got years ahead of me, years ahead of me, and it shows. So tonight, Patty and Garrett Bay and I are here to provide the city council and the members of the public with an update on the homeless shelter and services program and efforts that the mayor and the vice mayor have led with the city council to raise the issues related to homeless, such as with MetroLink and with the lack of funding services with LASSA. And you, as you are aware, a group of stakeholders, which includes the city, LA County, and a number of the faith-based, faith-based organizations and nonprofit entities, have gathered to see what we can do as a community to provide better services to our homeless population. And with that, a tour was organized by the vice mayor and LA County staff to take a look at the vacant county facility that previously housed the High Desert Regional Medical Center on Sixtieth Street West, near the county jail system. At that tour, the faith-based organizations and other nonprofits, as well as the county and the city, were able to take a look at that facility, which currently sits on twenty acres of land, has a hundred thousand square feet of building space, and has the ability to provide shelter in separate facilities for both, actually for men, women, and families. It also would double, at least double, the emergency shelter capacity we currently have here in the city of Lancaster. This facility is also large enough to offer homeless services that are provided through the various nonprofit organizations that offer meals, training, counseling services, and medical care. So we would be able to consolidate and put these services under one roof. After that tour, it was the consensus through all the parties involved that there was an overwhelming positive feedback about utilizing this facility. The group then subsequently met again to discuss the vision for the shelter and a plan for operating the facility's services. As a result of that meeting, several action items came out of that. The faith-based organizations agreed to develop a plan to relocate and consolidate their services under one roof. And the county also looked, is looking to determine how it can repurpose that property and that site for facilities for homeless services before the end of this calendar year. The county is also looking and assessing the feasibility to maintain the facility and pay for its utility costs once it's operational. In the meantime, the city staff committed to develop a funding plan for both the capital improvements and the ongoing facility programming costs, and Patty Garrett Bay here will actually go through that concept of how we would propose to do that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Kelvin mentioned, over the last couple of months, we've been working to familiarize ourselves with the different funding opportunities that are available to offset the capital improvement and the operational costs for the regional homeless shelter. We're confident that through a combination of our community development block grant entitlements, state grants, private grants, and local contributions, we'll be able to fully fund the facility and all of its needs. Our partners are working together at this time to determine what our real costs are, and once those numbers are established, we'll be able to put together an actual funding strategy to present to council. Our goal is to present something to council sometime in April. We believe that the funding strategy will ask for an equal contribution from each of the cities as well as the county, and those that, that money will be used, obviously, to cap, for the capital improvements at the facility, and also ask for an ongoing revenue source. We'll ask the cities and the county to reprogram a portion of their community development block grant entitlement to go specifically towards programming the facility so that our nonprofit partners and our faith-based organizations can focus on programming and doing the outreach for the facility instead of, you know, worrying about having to maintain the facility and pay for it. At one point, we were expecting to secure Proposition Forty-One funding, which the state released to support homeless veterans. However, after that notice of funding became available, we realized that the state was actually more interested in funding permanent housing for veterans. But we're still actually pursuing that funding because what we've noticed with the state is that at times they'll release funding for whatever purpose, and because they get, you know, they don't have a lot of interest, they'll actually end up changing their scope and then people are able to apply for those funds. So we're hoping that'll happen in this situation. And we also know that there's other state grant funding that's available that is directly for emergency operation shelters. Now that we have a handle over our funding opportunities, their next steps include working with the county to determine what our opening date will be for the facility. Also, we'll work with them to figure out, sorry, we'll figure out what our real costs will be, and then we'll work with our nonprofit and our faith-based partners to formalize our partnership and to figure out what each of those organizations will contribute towards the facility. Grace Resource Center is working with our faith-based partners at this time to put together a implementation plan for the facility. Our goal is to phase services in. So we're not going to do everything all at once. We're going to really phase it in, we're going to start small, and we're going to expand our services out as we get additional, we have an additional need, or we also get additional partners on board with the project. We'll work with this, with the county as well to create a capital improvement plan that allows us to do some of those capital improvements that we know need to take place in the facility while we have the facility open and available for the public. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Are we doing anything through LASSA?
We are. There's actually one opportunity that I sent over to the county for review because it's actually funding that they're eligible for, and so Norm and I are working on that right now.
Do you know any of the ministerial associations? Their goals are as far as adopting wings? You want to speak on that?
Absolutely. And that's one of the implementation plans that they're developing as far as those services, so that is part of their discussion points, is how they would go about doing that, so that is ongoing.
So we are going to have a dividing line as far as faith-based community is, so we can get different grants, so we can divide the area up into six different regions. We can say our block grants can go to this, our HUD grants can go to this, the vet grants can go to this, and then our faith-based communities can take care of the rest.
Absolutely, that's the plan. Because there are so many different funding sources and all of them have different requirements, we'll do exactly that. We'll have an area that's created just for the faith-based groups and they can provide all the services and they can provide, you know, information that's relevant to their organizations, and then we'll have things that are just open to the general public with funding available through the state or through HUD.
Do you want to touch base on moving other facilities up here, such as the drug and alcohol facilities from Acton?
Absolutely. We've actually had a lot of, and this is actually a really good thing, we've had a lot of nonprofit organizations who are really excited and they're on board and they want to provide their services. So again, that's one of the things that we're working out through our implementation plan, is just seeing who's out there, what services they provide, and how we fill everything in that the facility will need. You know, there's some things that will be the obvious things to start, so Grace Resource Center is obviously our lead partner, they're going to start the services out for us, but you know, drug abuse counseling, that's very important, and so we'll figure out a way to, you know, put them into the scheme of our entire plan. Others who have contacted us are groups that are, you know, more focused on work development, training, and things like, things of that nature, and so of course, we'll find places to place them into.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We're talking about moving the Acton rehabilitation up to Lancaster? Tell me that's not true.
I think what we'll end up doing is, you know, that's something that needs to be determined, but I think some organizations will probably leave their main facilities open, and they'll have a, you know, they'll have a secondary, yeah, secondary organization or portion of their group that will just be at the facility. So they may keep their facility open in Acton, but they'll have staff or they'll bring services to the homeless shelter.
So do we have somebody making certain we're not adding to the load? You know what I mean? I mean, it's one thing to provide treatment services, it's another thing to create a situation where we have more drug addicts. I mean, the, a good program will have ten to fifteen percent recovery rate. I mean, this is not something we want to introduce into our community with added load to it.
And that's actually one of the things we're talking about as far as part of the ongoing programming, funding for that, is that we are looking to be able to bring on a coordinator of all of these services provided so that we make sure that the programs that are being provided are consistent with the needs here and that the services aren't going over and beyond what they should be here. And so by having that person on site, whether that's through the LA County or through a joint powers authority, looking at how we actually do the operations on a daily basis. So there would be an individual responsible for that.
We have fallen in this trap before. I do not want to repeat history. We are, we are not the receptacle of LA's problems. And, I mean, we have to be absolutely vigilant about that.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, it's, well, enough said. All right?
Yeah, we'll make sure of that.
We'll make sure of that.
Okay. Thank you. Good job. Okay, moving on to council agenda, any speaker cards?
None.
Any communications?
None.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve CA One.
Second.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous, passes unanimously. Council reports, the mayor doesn't have anything, Lancaster Housing Authority, no action, Lancaster Financing Authority, no action, Lancaster Power Authority, no action, Lancaster Successor Agency, no action, City Manager.
Two quick announcements. We have the airshow coming up, the twentieth and twenty-first and twenty-second of March. Should be an exciting time. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. And then also, April is Autism Awareness Month, and once again, we will be lighting up the museum, Lantern Room, and the LPAC in recognition of Autism Awareness Month.
Thank you. Who's our liaison to the airshow?
The liaison would be led by Rhonda Perez.
Can we ask them as far as for the parking and that, if they, we can use the facility at the fairgrounds? To alleviate some of that parking?
Sure, that has been discussed, and I will make it available as an option to them again.
We're going to bust them back and forth?
Yeah. I think it would be a good idea to stop some of the problems there.
Okay, great. Anything else? Good. City Clerk?
This is the time to address the council, agency, and authority on non-agendized matters. Please complete a speaker card, which can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Fran Sarris Harris.
Good evening. I'm fine, thank you. I could see you.
In a second.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council, and ladies and gentlemen. As you know, my name is Fran Sarris Harris, and it's a pleasure to be here amongst all of you. I enjoy coming and talking with all of you. I wanted to bring up some good things. I went to the curbside chat meetings and with Brian, and it was very informative. I'm just hoping that our city adheres to some of the things that were brought up because what a lot of things that were brought up were basically is that we don't need to spend a lot of money to do things right, okay, as far as the facades and the streets and housing. And we also spoke, we also spoke about, again, about duplex housing. And, well, I think Brian will probably tell you more than I have, I just found, I just found it very inspiring. And to try to keep Lancaster as it was intended to be, as small, but a nice little hometown type of town, instead of getting too modernistic. Anyway, that's my viewpoint then, for what it's worth. I have, well, I have two things. First of all, you had a meeting, what was it, a Business Outlook Conference meeting? I wanted to go. I called this paper because they did not tell me that it was going to cost a hundred and fifty dollars to get in. Had I known prior to, because I had to make, I was trying to make arrangements with access to taking and so forth, so I don't have to depend on anybody. But the thing of it is, I called the paper and I spoke to, well, I didn't speak to anybody. I called the business editor and I called the opinion editors, and there was no one that never, never returned my call. I had to leave a message on both, so I even told them, "Doesn't anybody work here?" Because they don't return the calls. And I'm not a computer person, so they can't email me or whatever.
They don't return Marvin's calls either.
Okay, well, we're in the same boat then, Mr. Mayor. But I, you know, I kind of looked back to her because, plus, when they put it in the paper, they didn't give you all the information.
You should have called me, Fran, I'd have snuck you in. I was going to sneak Ed in, he didn't show up.
So, okay, that's it. Now, the next thing is, oh, well, I got thirty seconds, thirty seconds? Anyway, the tattoo business. Do we really need all this tattoo business to, for our financial status of Lancaster? We've got about three or four right on the boulevard.
I don't think so. I've been trying to talk my wife into one now for about twelve years. I mean, nada, nothing.
And, you know, I just, I just, I mean, we're supposed to be a Christian community, and I just don't see people defacing their bodies that way, and I don't see that why we should encourage it, instead of, you know, publicizing it so much. But again, there's my, that's my opinion.
The response to that is, we really don't have a choice. If they meet the requirements, we have to give them a license. The...
But so close together, isn't there also a restriction of they have to be so many blocks or miles or whatever apart?
I don't believe so.
No?
I don't believe so.
That guy right there.
Oh.
You know, I asked him to do something about it and...
Well, if the mayor can't do anything, well, I'm, certainly, I'm not going to be, nothing done.
I did my best.
Well, I don't know.
Three on the boulevard.
Yeah, I know, but geez, that's a heck of a lot.
You know, she has a point. It could tip real easy now. I mean, we really can't let another one on. So the city attorney's looking at me like, "Don't, Rex, don't say that in public."
Well, you know, because...
You know, I mean, she brings up a point. Maybe we should look at the signage ordinance.
Because, you know, a lot of kids see this and they're all starting to get tattoos too, and I'm sure it's not our, I mean, not totally the city's problem, but it's a parent's problem, but if it's there, they're going to use it.
It's the doctors. The doctors are encouraging it because they can do more liver transplants down the road.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
It's, it's true. All those, all those kids getting all those tattoos are going to be needing liver transplants. If you, if you cover too much of the body with tattoos, it disrupts the ability to sweat, and you can't get rid of the waste, and as a result, it overtaxes the liver, and you need a liver transplant. It's a little-known fact, nobody knows it, and especially the kids that are, you know...
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Fran.
Everybody have a nice evening.
Willie Green.
Oh, okay. Mayor Parrish, council numbers. I have a concern about drivers exiting our parking lot. I live at Civil Winds Apartments, and at one time, the curb was painted red for parking purposes. That has long since faded. I've contacted people that I was instructed to contact about the problem. It's a safety issue. I spoke with the engineer that's, that was handling my request, and he goes by regulations. And what's in the book is not always what you see. And all I asked was for someone to come down and spend a few minutes and make an observation. He told me, and I forgot his name, but he said that it would affect parking on fern. And I disagree. It doesn't. It only affects a few feet on either side of the gate so that people can have vision when they're coming out. We have high-profile vehicles that park, and some of them park within a foot of the curb that leads into the parking lot. And you can't see. And he gave me a dissatisfying statement that they just have to get further out into the street in order to see. Well, that ended my conversation because that's ridiculous. He said that there was, they didn't do paint on the curbs anymore. I said, "Well, they just painted down by the post office and down by the library." His statement was, "Well, that's the boulevard." I'm not concerned about cosmetics. I'm concerned about safety. And there's no comparison between painting the boulevard and seeing that people have a safe access to the street. And he said that they put up signs. If they put up signs, what's the problem? Put up signs that you don't pass the sign. You know, and this has been going on since November.
Okay. Mr. Green? You know, whenever Mr. Green comes, he makes sense to me. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't behoove us to have somebody actually meet with him and actually look at the safety concerns he has because he, he's able to spot a lot of things that see, we seem to miss. And it might be worth the half hour to an hour to have somebody from the city make an, make an appointment with him and look at all of them. Because you do, you, you seem to be very observant of issues that affect seniors especially. You know, I'm, and I think he has a good point, especially in regards to senior housing, is they need more time to, to decide to proceed into the street. That's just a cog, a question of cognitive functioning. And since, you know, I'm 63, I'm on your side.
I'm a bit older.
We'll be happy, I, we've probably observed it, but we'll be happy to specifically go out and look at it again and talk to Mr. Green about those issues.
Okay, they, they, Mr. Green, they will be sure to give them your name and number and all that because they're going to set up a meeting with you, and let's deal with all of it at the same time, okay?
That's fine, I appreciate it.
Make a list.
I will.
Okay? But I, every time you've been up here, you make a lot of sense.
I try.
Okay. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Maria Elena, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. You know, you could have brought us something to eat.
I barely made it here. Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff, I'm here on a positive note. Number one, yesterday, the Lemon Leaf signed up for Lancaster Choice Energy. Yay! Good job. We're going to get everybody on board with that. Two, I think this is an important thing, the Lemon Leaf is now exclusively shopping for all products in Antelope Valley. And that's huge. For the Lemon Leaf, it's about a $10,000 to $20,000 savings a month. And two, it's probably over $200,000 for the year. So for us, that's a lot. That's a lot. So even though it's not just in Lancaster, I would like it to be more in Lancaster, but we're exclusively shopping with Sam's Club, Costco, Viata, Walmart, and it's huge savings for us. So I think Shop Lancaster is working. I'm trying to get the other restaurants on board with that, and it's positive. So, good job. The sheriff and consistently, Captain Nelson, are meeting, it's the third Thursday of the month, at Lemon Leaf with the community. So we're staying on top of that, and people are, are bringing in their concerns, and coffee is happening in the mornings, 7 o'clock, I think it is, the third. Anyways, that's working. Museum is on fire. Andy was here tonight. I think she's doing a fantastic job at the museum. The exhibits are fantastic. I was in art degree at Loyola Marymount, and it's really, we're getting a lot of traffic from Los Angeles area and, and all over. So they're coming to see our boulevard, and they love our boulevard. Another thing is Kat, the executive director of Boulevard Association, is really working hard and doing a fantastic job pulling the businesses together. So, good choice. I don't know who chose her, but it's working. And the other thing I had to talk about is One Family One Restaurant. Jim Menades, Jim and Lynn Menades from Red Brick Pizza started a new organization for the food insecure, and we're working with Grace Resources, the Boys and Girls Club in the Antelope Valley. Kelvin was at our first meeting. We have pulled on about 10 restaurants. We're working on 20 restaurants in the Antelope Valley. The best part of this program is it works with the restaurants, and it works with feeding food insecure families in the valley and keeping, it takes a little pressure off the Grace Resources, and it's helping the restaurant businesses and it's helping the community. So the money is staying into our community. I mean, I could go into detail of that later, but it's a fantastic program, and the best part of it is it, that all, it's all staying in the Antelope Valley, it's staying in Lancaster, and the restaurants are working together with it. And the city has been working with us, so we're on the right track. So this is a positive, positive thing that's happening. Perfect timing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Strom? Come on down.
Good afternoon, board. I am from Palmdale, so I'm not from Lancaster.
Okay.
But I've spoken...
It's okay, you can still speak.
I have a concern that is, I don't know how to say it, but there's an animal shelter on 55th Street and Avenue I. Number one, the bus companies switched routes, so people that ride buses cannot pass to get to pick up their animal if it's left there. A lot of animals in Antelope Valley are being dumped because people are not allowed to give them out or sell them outside of stores. Quite often, there is people that go to animal shelters. I've seen this first business myself. I've seen this man walking into animal shelter up here in Lancaster, and he said that he wanted to get animals. And every animal that he's gone before has passed away. These animals were actually shown on a group called PETA, it's on Facebook, and they, what he was doing to each animal, I don't want to discuss it, it's really graphic, but the kind of things that he was doing to them were unnecessary testing and torture. And I was hoping that maybe you could somehow assist. I asked the mayor in Palmdale, that's why they're building a non-kill shelter, try to shut down the kill shelter and open up a non-kill shelter and have more closer, stricter observation what's really going on in there. I've seen drug drailing, I've seen a lot of other things, mistreatment of animals. And they don't like me saying this, and that's the way it is. So I was hoping that the city of Lancaster could help me.
Specifically, what would you like me to do?
I guess have more help, maybe have random visits, you know, somebody do maybe, you know, I know you don't have a lot of people to do this, but I've, I figured if people are arrested for different crimes, they could be told to volunteer. Money could be funded to donate to the animal shelter for, you know, the food and feeds. So instead of, you know, having the shelter to support it themselves.
You know, the, the issue with the shelter is it's a county facility. It's not a city facility.
I know.
Which gives us very limited ability to effectuate anything. Now, if somebody is, is getting animals and torturing them, that's the sheriff's department issue. And before you leave, I'm sure the captain will have somebody speak to you to see if we can get more information on that, okay?
I also spoke with the manager at Animal Care, and she was real concerned about if it was her man that was driving, one of her guys driving the truck that I followed. He was going 85 miles per hour down Avenue I, down to the freeway called CHP. It's built in a way where you can't see over the, the truck. I didn't peek over the truck because it's really not my job to do that, but I took the plate down. I put it on Facebook, and I alerted everybody that this truck is going excessive speed and came from Animal Care. And she was concerned if those, sorry about the light, if any animals were seen on that truck. So I feel there's more to this picture that's being said. That's why I'm here.
We'll have a deputy talk to you before you leave, okay? See what we can find out.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, the board.
What? You want to adopt a pet?
Yeah. I have a program where you have this... Have an Adopt a Pet program where you do like Michael Antonovich. Every Friday, he shows up with a Adopt This Pet, or like one of the news organizations, and it would make a nice picture with Adopt This Puppy or This Pet.
I think Randy could be in charge of that.
Randy, you have a new job.
So I'm going to be the mayor Adopt a Pet program? First I have to get elected mayor, right?
You know, I know, whoa, whoa, that was good, wasn't it? You bring me one pit bull, and we will not be friends ever again.
I have adopted pets, and I, I think there are a world of them, so...
I think that's a good idea. I'm in. I'm in. Okay?
Just as, an idea.
Okay, thank you. It's a, you got it. Okay, what else we got? Oh, we got closed session? Do we have a closed session today?
Do you want to introduce what happened?
I will, I will.
There's one more.
What?
I think there's two more that...
Wally, you were late, and I'm still mad about the decrepit remark, so I'm not cutting you any slack.
Fran is my Fran. But you, I don't know.
We have Sheldon Carter from the Justice Commission, right? And we have Randy Hall from the Planning Commission, right? Thank you for coming. Thank you for attending.
Thank you for having us.
And do you have your reports ready?
Oh, yes.
That's good.
What would you like to hear about?
Got anything interesting happening?
We sent you the Build It Better program, which was a nice complement to your solar requirements, so Lancaster's moving forward with its environmental push. We're working on the sign ordinance, the temporary sign ordinance, which we should have ready for you before too much longer. We recently went to that city chat that the Fran was talking about, Strong Towns. We have some real challenges ahead for us in that, and it starts in the planning department. Also, you had a great idea the other day that you shared with me about building codes for healthier living, so we're, that's just like a starting. It's like the egg has been laid and we're trying to see what's going to grow out of it.
Good.
So, thank you.
We got another one.
Okay.
Sacramento, Sacramento's now, they're letting, you know, urban gardeners sell their fruits and vegetables, you know, with an ordinance right in the neighborhoods. And I hear Ryan loves the idea and he's working on it. Is that right?
Actually, you recently adopted the TOD overlay zone. That zone does provide for that.
Really?
Within, we were thinking specifically of the area east of the railroad tracks or other locations in there. So yes, we've taken the first steps towards that.
So, Joe, how come Sacramento got national news for it and we did it first? Just a question. Thank you.
Sheldon at the Criminal Justice is taking on our new ordinance.
Sheldon?
Yes, first I'd say that we have our meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock, and we're going to be taking up the, the new ordinance and answering questions on it. And I'll, I'll say that one of my three adopted dogs ate my report.
What, your three adopted dogs, what?
Ate my report.
Ate your report. My dog ate my hearing aid two, two days ago. I got one left.
Are you serious?
Yeah, it's a serious thing. It's like a really expensive hearing aid. But I thought it was an act of love, you know? It smelled like me, and so he ate it.
It's a good choice.
You know, looking for the lemonade in all this. City Attorney, any announcements?
None.
City Council meeting is adjourned until April 14th, 2015, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done, and I'm, well, no, it's not really done yet, sweetheart. It'll be about an hour and a half, then I'll be home.